We'll call the meeting to order. District 518's meeting, roll call. Let all the record reflect, all board members are here. Recognition of visitors and guests. I don't have any special recognition. Let's welcome all guests who are attending. Correspondence and recognition, public participation. I've received no requests for public participation. Recognition of students, staff, and community. We have several recognition items here. Congratulations to our WHS teacher, Patrick Mahoney, for being named to Minnesota's Teacher of the Year semifinalists. Congratulations to Oscar Galvez of being named to the Big South All-Conference Wrestling Team. Riley Nickel for being named to the Big South All-Conference Girls Hockey. And to Olivia Barber. Addison Gerber, Hall Bullerman, Kristi Benjes, Kelsey Salada, and for being named to the Big South Conference Gymnastics. Congratulations to the boys' basketball team as they were Section II AAA runner-up. Congratulations to Trojan Basketball Players named to the Big South All-Conference Team. Taren Sparts was named for girls' basketball. And Caleb Kanathi. And Abagat- Aba- Abagati. OPU being named to the boys' basketball all-conference. Mica? No, that wasn't Mica, it was?
Kaylee.
(inaudible). 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 Mayor (inaudible). (inaudible). Named as honorable mention. Meant for the Big South Conference. Congratulations to all those athletes. Very successful years. Moving on to the approval of agendas. The consent agenda, we have an addition, 4.319. That is to approve appointments of Emma Osland as interventions at the men's school effective August 14, 2023. That's an addition to the consent agenda. So we can motion to the consent and main agendas.
I move approval of both the consent and main agenda with addition of 4.319.
Second. Second by Tom.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the city of Congress say aye.
Aye.
All of them, both same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
I approve. I make the motion to approve the minutes.
3.1 and 3.2.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Steve for approval of minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All of them, both same sign. Motion carries. 4.0 consent agenda, approval of (inaudible).
I move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
(inaudible). Any further discussion? All those in favor of the city of Congress say aye.
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 All of them, both same sign. Motion carries. 5.0 monthly financial review.
I should have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of February. So we're about two-thirds of the way through the school year. The revenues are running just slightly behind where we were at this time last year. And the expenditures are running a little bit ahead. A lot of that is due to the community ed building construction coming out of the general fund. And that project is near completion. So that's pretty well spent out. Otherwise, there haven't been any unusual or extraordinary expenses or revenues.
Any questions today? Go to 5.2, approve student expulsion number one.
I move approval of expulsion.
Second.
(inaudible). Expulsion number one. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schute.
Aye.
Mr. Prins.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
5.3, approve maintenance of schedule agreements.
So what you have in front of you is the, or what was provided as part of the packet, the maintenance and scheduling agreement with the city of Worthington related to the baseball field. It would run through March 15th, through the end of the 2023 baseball season. And again, it's related to mowing, preparation of the field. Put it down, agro lime, chalk, any minor repairs. Total cost, $10,600. And the operation committee reviewed this, recommended approval.
May we have a motion?
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the agreement for the maintenance of the ball fields.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Second by Aaron to approve the maintenance scheduling agreement with the city of Worthington. Any further discussion? Was that up a little bit?
Yeah, it was, uh...
Went up 500.
500.
$500, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on board meeting, board committee meetings. This is for...
So this would be for when Mr. Woodblum takes over and comes in as part of this. Currently, Mr. Lorenz is serving on the instructional committee and the license negotiations committee, meet and confer. And then Mr. Schaefer was serving on communications committee and district technology committee. Probably the communications committee, I would probably say is not where we would probably want Mr. Woodblum. But as far as if you want to do some other adjusting or changing or whatever, you could do that as well. I would probably suggest that you include him on the instruction committee. But the license negotiations, probably Mr. Lorenz needs to stay on that one. Other than that, the rest, I would, I'll keep my mouth closed.
Would it be appropriate to take Aaron out and instead of alternative, make her one of the communication committee members then?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, so Aaron will be on the communications committee? Is that what it is?
She's an alternate. I'd just say, take her off as alternate and then have her as the, as the full member. I don't know if we really need an alternate at this point. I think we had her on there because of Brad's, you know, kind of finishing out.
Yeah.
I also suggest that, that we put, I don't know, did you mention the technology committee for...
I didn't mention that.
Okay. I think we should put him on...
Matt will go in the structural.
Yeah, put Matt on the, on the technology committee also instead of Brad.
Okay.
I'd make a motion that we make the, establish the committees with instructional committee as being Matt and Joel Lorenz remaining on the licensing. And the meet and confer be Matt along with technology committee members for Matt. And then Aaron being the new member instead of the alternate on the communications committee. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Was I the alternate for technology then?
You're on it.
You're on the committee.
Yeah. There's no alternate on that one.
There's not? And I'm fine, Matt.
There's two, two members.
Okay.
You're still on it.
Okay, that's two, yeah.
Unless you wanted to get off it. You're still...
Well, I'm just wondering, Matt's on the radio at seven o'clock in the morning and...
That one meets early, doesn't it?
Yeah, and it's been not good for me. I'll be real honest. So I think that one's kind of vital that we probably have a couple of members that are accurate with attending the meetings. And I don't think Matt, with being on the radio, is going to be able to be at too many seven o'clock meetings. And myself, if somebody wanted to switch with me, I would just soon do that. Afternoons are better for me with committee meetings than seven in the morning as well.
So you need another person for communications, you're saying?
Well, the technology.
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 Okay.
I mean, even like this last one, it was virtual. But then I was feeding cattle and it was 7:30 till it dawned on me that I had a virtual meeting with technology. But I can work around it if I have to. I'll figure it out. It's just I'm afraid Matt, with his radio time, he'd be a tough one for him.
Who's the alternate then on that one? Technology?
There isn't. There wasn't one.
Oh, you can put me down as an alternate if you want to.
Want to put him down as the member?
Do you want to be the member?
Want to be the actual member?
How often you meet?
Once a month.
That's fine.
Is there a committee? Okay, whatever, that's fine.
Is there the option to maybe move the technology committee to later in the day?
One of those, it's always met early. It's always an option. That's something you need to bring up at the committee meeting.
I'll just try and... I gotta get better with setting my calendar.
I know the feeling.
Yeah.
So there's two of them on that committee?
Correct.
So Tom and...
Myself.
And yourself, if you're willing to...
I'll stay on it. I'll get it nailed down.
So you and I are the only ones then?
Yeah. Now is there a committee that... Because Matt would only be on one committee. Most of us are on, what, two committees?
Well, this means he wouldn't be on any.
So we should... Is there anything on there that looks more enticing, John, in the afternoons for Matt that somebody would maybe switch or let him be a part of?
Yeah. Other one would be probably curriculum or World's Best Workforce type. Staff development. They meet in the afternoon, don't they?
They do. I don't have to be on staff development. We could put Matt there on staff development if he wants that. That meets in the afternoon.
You could put him there since Lori's all right. But Steve's motion would need to be amended.
Yeah. To make, I amend my, I amend my motion with those changes.
Okay, so Matt will go on district staff development and I'll go off. Okay?
And Tom will go on the, in place of Brad on the technology committee. Is everybody clear?
Okay, everybody got their assignments?
We're going to get an updated list then?
Correct.
Lisa can send a new updated, she'll send a new updated list out. Okay, Steve's motion as meant or changed as he presented it. Any further discussion? Is this a voting item or not?
Do we have a second?
I second it the first time and I'll second it the second time with the change.
So you got to vote on the amendment and the motion.
Okay, we'll vote on the amended, amended motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amended motions, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I will vote on the motion as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Lisa can send the update out. Okay. 5.5, approve achievement and integration plan and budget.
This was presented to the operations committee. Ms. Johnson presented the information related to that and they're recommending approval of the plan and the budget.
Okay, need a motion?
I move approval of the integration plan and budget.
Motion by Adam.
Second by Tom.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6, approve long-term substitute teacher rate increase.
So with the long-term substitute teacher rate at the instructional committee, we had talked about moving it to 275, kind of trying to keep the same gap. When I went back and did some double checking, either my math was not good or I lessoned wrong or something. The actual gap is closer to $90, to 95, to $100, depending on what number you're looking at. So in that, I want to make sure I'm clear that in order to keep the same gap minimally, you got to, you would, rather than the 275 that the instructional committee talked about, it's 290 or 295 or 300, depending on where you want to go. So the actual number you looked at would have been $160 a day and then 200. So at 255 plus $40, it's really about 295 to keep, maintain the same gap.
That's for full-time versus... That's for full-time, right?
And would that apply to all long-term subs? Or only those who have previously taught in the district?
Only those who previously taught.
And what would the rate be for those who have not previously?
255.
Okay.
That's the, for a long time, it's always been based off step one on the salary schedule.
And so we're looking at the salary schedule as it is in this contract year? Because that's going to change every two years with the percentage.
Well, it actually changes every year when the base moves.
Right, but we renegotiate it every two years.
Correct.
Is it something that we shouldn't tie to that and make it a set amount above the sub-rate? Or do we, is there a reason to keep it tied to step one? The teacher contract?
That's historical. That's what it's been.
Okay.
You can go to pretty much any district. That's where it's at. Eventually, over many years, it'll catch up. But again, if you move the sub-rate, that will change again in the future years, but...
Most of these teachers are...
Most are long-term subs, are former teachers. But not always.
But they're experienced teachers too, which should give some credit to.
Absolutely.
And we're going off the first year of the contract, which isn't, doesn't do any justice to the longevity they have as being teachers for many years. So I don't think we're out of line of going to the new 295 area.
I'd make that motion that we go for experienced teachers, long-term sub-rate of 295.
It'd be the long-term sub-rate period, 295.
Yep.
And any or motion effective immediately?
Effective immediately, yes.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
Yep.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Tom to set the long-term sub-rate at 295.
Okay, and that's for experienced teachers only? Or retired teachers?
Retired teachers from...
Teachers from our district?
From our district.
From our district? Or any district that... Retired teacher from our district?
Right, retired teachers from our district, yes.
Okay. And otherwise, it's at the 255?
Correct.
That's for long-term only substitute, Dennis?
Correct.
One day at a time.
And then as we renegotiate step one, it'll change?
It doesn't have to. Will it have to be reapproved?
The long-term sub-rate will change. Not necessarily what...
So it is tied to the first year on this, on the contract?
Correct. Has been. That's been past practice for years.
So then that gap will stay the same unless we change the sub-rate for...
Correct.
That's not long-term.
Or the short-term sub, yeah. Or day-to-day sub.
Okay, yeah, got it.
Everyone clear on the motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.7, approve first reading of policy 516.5 overdose medication.
So this policy is really related to having Narcan in the school district, which is a drug that effectively it treats, will treat overdose of other drugs. It's not a required policy, but many districts are looking at that. The legislature is talking about that as a requirement. This policy is kind of out in front of it because there's a number of, there's many people that are concerned in our district that believe it should be in place, including myself. And with that, I've gone through and made the adjustments. And based on the input I've gotten, the instructional committee looked at it and would recommend approval.
I move to approve the first reading of policy 516.5.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Lori to approve the overdose policy 516.5 for the first reading. Any discussion?
I noticed that on page three, paragraph four, when it talks about the crisis team determining the type and method of training and identifying staff members, that paragraph seems pretty vague. And I'm not sure if it's intentionally vague, giving leeway to the crisis team, or whether perhaps we would want to provide more parameters to the expectations of the type of training or, you know, how many staff members per building should be trained or things like that.
Realistically, in most of our buildings, it'll only be the school nurse or their backup person. So there really will only be probably two people to ensure we, two, maybe three at the very most, so that we ensure we have somebody in the building. And it will be in a secure location, so it will be limited access for people. So there's a little intentionality to the vagueness.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.8, approve a change to the human resources system, to powerful system, and a change to the substitute system, to Red Rover substitute management system.
So with this, the operations committee did review this. We did take a look at the one piece that was in there that was removed, which was the Spark Hire video interviewing along with the implementation and integration piece. So the cost did go down from where it was for the annual cost, which is $50,441.11. There is a one-time, there are costs related to one-time implementation of this that totaled about just a little over $29,000. And then the other piece I need to remind you is we've been paying for a subsystem that no longer will pay for because the Red Rover subsystem will go through teacher on call and they pay for it. So there actually is a little bit of savings there on the total cost related to ongoing costs. With this, this was completed by the committee that did the review. This is all employee-based, so it's time system, leave systems, HR systems that are a part of it. So it's been part of the student information system, campus system, and then the employee system that we've been looking at this year. The other two, at this time, there's not a recommendation to move forward with any changes. But this one came as a recommend to make changes. So the operation committee made that, looked at it, reviewed it, and is making that recommendation.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new, the changes to the human resource system.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Second by Aaron. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.9, discussion on athletic additions to Grailshine campus.
So back when we had, and this was gone over by the operations committee, back when we had a work session, we talked about the different options or things to consider. On this is an estimate of those costs. So there's three things. Middle school, grass field inside of the track, replacing that and making it a turf field. And that estimate came in at 2.5 million plus. There was the construction of two soccer fields at the Grailshine site. And that cost, well, excuse me, I got to back up. The artificial turf was 3.4 million plus. And then the soccer fields are 2.1 million plus. And then the other one we've had conversations about is the construction of a varsity baseball field. If you remember, we actually, to the west of the community ed, everything's pretty well leveled out there by going through and doing the fine dirt seeding, all the pieces of the puzzle that need to be included. Total cost, 2.26 million plus. Those were the numbers that are there. These, any of these projects, the board would decide to try and move forward, would not be a some, this summer project. This would be a next summer project. There's no way to plan, bid, and get everything done. So at this point, it's a conversation between the entire board and the future direction you would like to see on either one or all of these projects, so...
On the varsity baseball field, we had a donor that was going to give, is that included in this anywhere?
So I'm still working on the donor. And as of right now, their preference would be the soccer versus baseball. But I don't have that final commitment. I had a preliminary conversation. They're working on it right now to try and figure out if and what that might be.
Chair.
Steve.
I, I think the, to, to keep things moving on the middle school practice field and that, and that field out there from, from natural turf to artificial turf would probably be a good investment. Right now, the use of that field is quite extensive and keeping grass on that field is, is almost impossible to have any quality of, of field there. And that by, by making it into an artificial turf field, I think that would, that would allow for, for a lot, the, the use to continue to take place, but also have a quality field that people could make use of. Here again, it's identified as a, as a practice field, but that actually gets used for other things besides practice. And it does get a lot of extensive use. So I think it'd be worthwhile making the investment in that field and moving that forward. As far as the soccer fields, I think it's a good investment. But if we have somebody that's, you know, thinking of donating, I think, being a donor and stuff or a sponsor for that part of the cost or all the costs, I think it'd be good for us maybe to, to keep that on the list. But maybe wait and see how that develops and see what our costs would be on... would be on that. As far as the baseball field goes, we have a, we have a field that we've put a lot of money into, new fences, new lights, new bleachers and stuff, and, and, and I think it's worth looking at the need for additional baseball field space, but I'm not sure if I'm ready to move ahead with a baseball, a, a new varsity baseball field at this point, but I think we, it's still something we may should have some more discussion on the need and use of that particular field.
Any further discussion? How, how would the funding come for these?
Um.
I mean, do we?
Some of it, well, I haven't looked at the funding options. I'll be honest, some of it potentially could be long-term facility maintenance, but again, that might be limited. The other part would be their assigned or general fund dollars, more than likely.
What about our other topic we were discussing?
Hockey.
Yeah.
At this point, it's kind of sitting there, there's some work being done on that, and again, that information will come later. And again, part of that conversation was to have a work session, to have further conversations in the end of April, and hopefully by then, maybe I'll have some information on a hockey facility. Now, the hockey facility would probably be what I'd term a, a joint project, which would be city, school, hockey association, and community. Because the, the estimates I, I have, which are really rough, that's why I, I'm not even gonna throw those out, but that's, that's a high-cost item.
So part of the funding is gonna come out of general fund for this project, then?
Well, yeah, it could come out of general fund, it could come out of the assigned account, depending on what's left in the assigned after all the projects.
I guess my concern is, right now, we're talking renewal referendum in '24 for operating. And at the operational meeting, you were saying a bunch of mandates might come through. If they get passed, it's gonna cost the school a lot more money to fund schooling. I feel we should hold off on all the projects, and then see what happens with the referendum and the legislative, because I feel that the education in the classroom is probably more important in athletic fields right now.
When will we know about legislation, this summer?
Legislative process ends May 22nd, I believe the date is.
They're halfway through the session. I was up there yesterday in St. Paul for the school board day at the Capitol, and they're exactly halfway, so they've got a lot to do in a short amount of time.
Did you talk to them about the mandates?
I heard a lot about them.
And I'll cover a little bit of the legislative station, stuff at the end, when I give my report, but.
Okay, so this is discussion only for this Grailshine?
Correct.
Campus.
And it's update for the other board members that aren't part of the operations committee. Again, we'll, we'll schedule a work session, and if, whether you wanna do it the end of April, or you wanna wait till the end of the legislative session, that's fine with me, doesn't matter, I don't think there's a big hurry.
How soon on this referendum, though, do we need to be pushing on that?
Well, if you're gonna do it this fall, I'm, to be honest, we haven't done anything. If you're gonna do it this fall, we have to do it, in my view, right after the legislative session, so we know where things land.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement, because they said that too yesterday, that there's a possibility that we could renew the existing operating referendum, whatever that amount is, that the local school board could do that without voter approval, but it'd have to be at the same level and the same amount of time. It'd have to be exactly as it is in place now. That possibility is out there, that could get passed, but they have no idea if that's gonna get pushed forward.
We'd have to wait until like the first part of June at this point. Yeah, I think that's fine, we'll know where things are at a little better at that point, and it'll give you time with all these other projects.
Sounds good to me.
So we'll wait until the legislative process is complete, and then we will get the information and have a work session at that point, is that the plan?
Yep.
Okay, we'll go with that. Approve Grand Canyon University Student Teaching Agreement.
So this wasn't presented at the instructional committee, but just as a FYI, it's a continuation of what's already been in place, so it's a matter of just approving it. We do have a student-teacher that will be coming in from Grand Canyon, so, for next year.
Okay, we need a motion.
I so moved the motion to approve the Grand Canyon University Student Teaching Agreement.
Motion by Laurie.
Second.
Second by Adam. To approve this student teaching agreement with Grand Canyon University. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Five point one, approve to delegate old social studies textbooks as surplus property.
I make a motion to declare it surplus property.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion?
Chair. Does anybody ever buy these textbooks, or what do we end up doing with them?
So.
Do we get buyers?
Actually, these textbooks, Mrs. Schuman has found some, another school that would like to buy them. We don't get a lot off them. Oftentimes, they just go in the recycle bin, but in this case, somebody will get use out of them, so that's why we wanna get them declared surplus and get rid of them.
I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign if you're probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Five point one two, approve student expulsion number two.
I move to approve the student expulsion number two.
Motion by Tom.
I'll second.
Second by Laurie. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we're going to reports. John?
So I have a, a couple items I wanna talk about. One, we have two days of snow makeup days that we have to make up somewhere in the calendar. I'm really kind of on the edge with any more learn-from-home. We are going to make at least temporary adjustment at this point at the high school and middle school to garner a little more what I'll call student instructional time, contact time, so that I have some flexibility to have another learn-from-home. If we get to mid-April and we see that we, we are gonna make it, and we don't need another day, then we'll adjust back. But example, what it is, is adjusting that we won't be doing the PLC time at the high school, and we'll make another schedule adjustment at the middle school to garner some additional time. So that's where we're headed on that one. The community childcare group is looking for a representative to serve on their RCCIP group. It is a little bit of a commitment, and they were wondering if any school board member would be willing to participate as a committee member of that group. There is some training that's coming up, and they're looking for what I'll call a core member from the school board. There will be, there is a time commitment with this one, so, just so you know. Currently, they've been meeting right before lunch typically, but I don't, on the training side, it'll be about a two-hour training, is what I'm reading.
How often do they meet?
Generally, monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah. And the first one is scheduled for April 5th on this one. I'm actually on the core planning team, and there's twenty-some members on that. This is actually a little bit different than that core team.
Would that be a good committee for Matt?
You could recommend him.
He's not on a lot of committees, so I thought this might be an opportunity for him.
He's not here, he's on.
I can ask him.
Okay.
If nobody else is interested, I'll ask him.
Matt, if you're watching, you're on the committee.
I think, give Matt the opportunity, and then if he, I, I could do it, or Aaron, do you have interest in it, or are you too busy?
While I'm interested in the subject and think it's an important one, since I just added a committee to be on the communications committee, I think I'll have to pass due to time constraints.
I'll consider it, but please ask Matt first, though.
All right, I'll see him in the morning.
Okay, that's right.
So the other one I wanted to bring up before I get to the legislative, the legacy wall. We have roughly about twelve people right now. I know there's some other organizations, businesses, and individuals considering, but I wanted to bring it to your attention and make sure you consider it, as well as promote it to others to participate. So again, remember, it looks like this. The lowest number down here, I call them bricks, but they're really granite pavers. And again, not the pavers that disintegrate, it's granite, so they're there forever. It's five, the first level's five hundred, the mid-level's fifteen hundred, and the top level, which are two-by-two granite pavers, those are four thousand. So it's one of those that, if you go by year, it's a pretty small investment, but when you, it looks like a big investment right up front, so. Anyway, I wanted to bring your attention, remind you, and hopefully inspire you to consider.
Chair, who's the contact for the school district for information on this, in case somebody who's watching this would like to find out more about it?
So if you would like to find more, or wanna get a paver, you can contact our communications coordinator, Anne Foley, and she would be happy to work with you on this, or provide you with the necessary information. And it's out on Facebook, it's in the Chamber newsletter, it's, she's got it out there. And we actually have a tentative deadline of April 1st for this first round. If we don't get enough, we'll probably have to extend that, but just FYI for you. So contact Ms. Foley, and she'll be happy to help get you signed up and take your money. The last one I wanna mention, I did put a handout by your sheet, and it's the legislative summary. A number of schools participated in providing a cost estimate of the legislative items out there. This is broken out by each of the current areas, such as TRA's sixty-thirty plan would be a cost of a hundred and fifty-three dollars per ADM. Things like health insurance is four hundred dollars per, four hundred and two dollars per ADM, added prep time is five hundred and five dollars per added ATM. So if you're looking at the overall cost, when you start adding this up, and how it figures up over the two years, even when you take off the added revenue, it's one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars per pupil unit. When I take that number times our pupil units, in order to balance our budget, if all this legislation passes, now I'm saying if all of it passes, and this probably isn't even a complete list, it would mean in our district over a five-million-dollar reduction just to balance our budget. So when Mr. Prins brings up the idea that there's a lot of costs tied in the potential legislation, he is definitely not wrong. And there are some of these things that infringe on a school board's manager rights, and I said it early, and Cory Maj put it in the paper. There's a lot of crazy going on, and some of this is common sense did go out the window, in my view. So some of this is extremely unaffordable for school districts, and thank goodness our district financially is pretty sound, but it's still gonna be a major issue for this district. And I can't imagine a school that is on the verge of SOD, how quickly they won't be able to pay their bills. So this is not, all this legislation, if it were to pass, is not a bright spot, even though they're talking about providing additional historic funding. So I'll leave it at that, I could say a lot more, but I just wanted you aware, this legislation, this legislative session with everything that's been proposed is just playing wild with costs. And that's the end of my report.
Chair, I just insert here, just because I was up at St. Paul yesterday, and we're not the only school district, there was probably, with superintendents and school board members, the room looked like maybe eighty people up there, and everybody was talking about what this would do to their district, and, you know, five million upwards to astronomical costs on that. The positives were that on the formula, the five percent and five percent, they think that that's gonna go, or at least close to that, and then some on the special ed cross subsidy, they're hopeful still at that fifty percent, but they're gonna push it at seventy-five, so we can get some relief there. But, yeah, we're not the only district, so MREA and MSBA is hearing us, and they're lobbying hard for some of this not to pass, because it's just unaffordable, especially if they're unfunded mandates, so we'll see where it goes.
Question for John. John, on the, one of these here is the minimum wage part of it and stuff, was there any estimation made in what, by raising the minimum wage up for those that would be brought up to a higher schedule, what that does to the schedules that were, that were above that? You know, obviously, there's always a graduated change in salary based on many factors. If you bring someone up to twenty-five dollars now, and there's somebody that's twenty-five, fifty, and there used to be a two or three dollar difference, is there any fact, is there any costs of that showing that that's gonna push the other salaries up higher besides to, to offset that?
Based on what I know about the legislation, they don't address a salary schedule, and again, that piece of the puzzle would have to be negotiated. Is there going to be a step schedule after that, or is this just where it's gonna be?
Well, I was thinking, I was talking about their salaries, I was talking about other employees' salaries that aren't impacted by this directly, but if, if you were making two or three dollars more an hour than somebody else, and all of a sudden, they're making the same as you, there's a reason why you're making two or three dollars more an hour. Usually, it has to do with risks, education, other types of factors that you use to set salaries, and so I have a feeling that if, if that changes, then it's gonna push other salaries further up, too. So it's not gonna just be affecting the lower salary people, it's gonna have an impact throughout the whole payer schedule to, to, to offset that, that change at the bottom.
Oh, absolutely.
It doesn't just end there, it goes all the way through the system.
Yeah, it would go to the negotiations.
Yes.
Table. Where it would end up.
I got a question for John. With the TM signing the free meals, free dinner and breakfasts, how's that affect the school district?
Well, so it's, from the standpoint, all kids will eat, will be good. The problem's gonna be, there's still the requirement of filling out free and reduced in order to, so I'm, I'm, we're gonna have to work to get every family to fill out free and reduced, so that our compensatory ed does not drop off. We're gonna hold harmless based on what they're promoting now for a year, but at that point, there's the potential of a drop-off if you don't. there's the potential of a drop-off if you don't get your free and reduced forms back in. And the question is, what's the incentive to get parents to fill out the free and reduced forms if I'm already getting free? So there, there's a lot of complications to it. I, I will tell you that paying for, for them paying for every meal is a good thing, because now we're not going into deficit in some, from some not paying their bills, but then there's the other side that also affects our compensatory ed. And our compensatory ed number is for next year's roughly six-point-two million dollars, so it's a big part of our budget.
I had heard, this is through somebody talking on the radio, a legislator talking on the radio, that, that they've, that they have a different method of calculating that compensatory aid now. I haven't heard what, they didn't go into detail what it was, but they said that question was asked of them, the response was they have a different way of doing that now to determine what that's gonna be, and that's not just on the local, that's actually goes, I think, to the federal level for some, because they're the ones who get the report for doing that. So that, that's what I had heard, is that they're finding a different method of calculating that. I think it's a good idea to have the free and reduced, the state puts the money, and I'm always curious on how they're gonna determine, they're gonna put so much, so many dollars per student, I would imagine, into your budget, and then you have to manage that amount of money, because you're no longer collecting any more money. If you overspend, then it comes out of your general fund, so that'll be part of the challenge, I think. And I think the benefit of it is, is, is if, if, you may, we shouldn't say it at the meeting, but, but if we have people who don't pay the bills, generally, we have no way of collecting. We can ask them for the money, do that type of stuff, and you're gonna have other people say, well, why am I, if they can go eat for free and, and they don't have to pay their bill, then why am I paying my bill for my kids, and, and, and you can't collect from me, and you can't do anything about it, so pretty soon as, you know, the whole system, if people find that out and they stop paying their bills and they come to school and kids eat for free, basically, you're into that program in one way or the other. Because there is no way of enforcing your fees at this point.
So, just so you're aware, MDE is working on a fix for the compensatory ed, but there's nothing in place. And there's nothing guaranteed in any, in place, so.
Yeah, like I said, this was a report, a legislator speaking on a radio station that, uh, that gave that information, that's where I got it from.
Um, so I, I have an update from the state legislator who has authored the bill that has passed, um, all committees and is expected to be in the education budget that defines the, um, formula for the compens- um, compensatory revenue. And, um, the combination, or the formula, is going to be determined by a combination of Medicaid direct certification, um, English language learner numbers, and high mobility slash homeless numbers. So, my understanding is that at least in the state of Minnesota, those, there's going to be a formula consisting of calculations with those three factors that is currently in the education, um, budget in both the House and the Senate. So, this is from, um, State Representative Sandra Feist. She, um, she's an attorney in the Twin Cities area, but is very familiar with Worthington. She was here, actually, in, in this room a couple of months ago, uh, and gave a talk to the social studies department. So she's, she's familiar with our school district and, um, is certainly all ears if there's specific comments or concerns that our school district would like to address.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, John?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, we go to instructional committee?
It's all been covered, yep.
All been covered. Operations?
That's the same for the operations committee, we went over everything, we talked at the meeting.
Okay, any other reports? We have, uh, work session item?
Yeah, so basically, I, I put in April, but based on the conversation tonight, we'll probably be talking that, moving that till after the legislative session.
Right.
So that'll be the, probably, first part of June.
We still be planting beans yet, John?
That way you can get your farming done.
Hopefully, right? Okay, any further business?
Yeah, I've got something I'd like to talk to you guys about. And I'm glad Josh is here. I mean, we've had some recent activity, John knows what I'm talking about, and I started talking to a few high school kids. I guess my big concern, and I didn't realize it was this big of an issue, but it must sound like bullying is becoming pretty major in our school district, and we're gonna lose some kids over it, and we've had some kids go to Sioux Falls over it. And after talking with some of the kids in our high school, I would like to look into this whole bullying factor and what our rules are, how much more stern we can get on our rules. I think some of these kids just get by with a little pat on their hand, and they go right back at it. I understand the social media aspect, we can't do nothing about. I would like to, if they're proven, if it's proven that they're on social media doing stuff, that we could do something. I don't know if that's available, but I don't think it's fair to our district to be losing kids and keeping the ones that are doing, creating the problem. And this all stems back to this fight that happened last week. We're losing that girl in our school district, and I think it's too bad, because she absolutely hates Worthington High School. I just, I think that's sad, and I, I don't know what our rules are, I don't know what our objectives are, we've never talked much about it. I guess, Josh, what's your opinion? You used to be a principal, how bad is it? I mean, we don't see it, we don't hear it, and then all of a sudden, things arise and we hear it.
Based on my history here, I mean, I know now there are students who have conflict between each other that typically starts outside of the school day on some type of social media. In my experience, admin, whether it was Mr. Hastings in the past as an AP when I was here, and I, I don't work here now, but I have to lead Mr. Prentz, takes the time to do his best to investigate. SRO, uh, school resource officers are brought in, trying to get in front of it. I do think when it's happening on social media outside of the school setting, we know it filters in, so admin, teachers, counselors are doing their best to talk to these kids to get in front of it. But I think once it starts on social media, it's really hard to stop it. So I have no doubt that even if admin, other teachers, other staff are, I'm certain there are kids who feel like it's already too far down the tracks, and, and quote-unquote, not, there's not enough being done, because it feels like the damage is already done, because once it hits, it's wildfire. So, it's, it's an interesting dilemma where I, I know that there probably are kids who feel like there's not enough being done, there's parents who might think there's not enough being done, but on the flip side of that, I've seen staff work and work and work to try to bring in kids, talk with kids, mediate with kids, and do what they can to try to help. So, I can see both sides. I, I don't think it would necessarily be fair to say that nothing's being done, but I wanna value the, the feelings from kids where, once it gets too far, um, to them, it feels like there's not enough that can happen to make it right.
So, you know, how many school resource officers do we have per school right now? Is it just one?
Two.
One that serves the high school in Prairie, and one that serves, and the learning center, and one that serves intermediate and middle school.
I mean, is that something we need to look at to help patrol this, control it just a little better, or is that?
The reality is, I'm gonna tell you that the term bullying gets used loosely, because, again, the first thing is, it's bullying, but back when Joel went to school, it was called, uh, peer consultation or peer, uh,
Peer pressure.
Pecking, pecking order. When I, that existed when I was in school, if I leapt off to a senior, the senior put me in my place. Nowadays, it's quick to call it bullying, and I'm going to say, particularly in a lot of cases, parents get frustrated, but they never talk to the school administrator to ask for help, or they never talk to a teacher. They don't bring it to us so we can look to try and investigate and help. And, and I know that for a fact, because just recently, that was the case. And again, we're willing to help parents and help kids, but they gotta be open about it, because on social media, there's this whole secret side. We can't shut down, example, social media sites, that has to go through the police, and we ask them in involvement. More police is not gonna solve this problem, it's actually students and parents that are gonna solve this problem. And again, in society, it's, for some reason, become appropriate to attack others, and that's just wrong. And that's kind of what's going on right now with bullying across, it, it, it isn't even just our kids, it's adults, and it's gotta stop. So, to say we're not doing anything, we'll do something if we know about it, and yes, there's consequences involved, and we turn it over to the police to deal with it, but we can't deal with it if we don't know about it. And again, it's not just the school that's gonna solve this, it's not just our teachers that are gonna solve this, or our other staff, this is kids and parents that are gonna solve this. Sorry, I got on my soapbox.
Here. Question for him. I, I'm not familiar with the exp- the specific instance that you're talking about, but I'm assuming, is that what, is that what you're referring to, is, is something that's happening on social media and carrying over into the school and causing violence in the school, like fights or, or attacks on students, on attacking other students?
I visited with John, I was, I got reached out to by a parent that, when this fight happened last week, that sparked, that was all based off bullying, according to the mom, and... So I started asking questions to other high school kids on what's really going on. We already, wasn't it like a month ago, we had something out about social media attacking or bullying, whatever you wanna say, to, to, we had something on our school page, didn't we? About that? Well, so when this fight happened, whatever, the girl that got beat up went to Sioux Falls because she was mentally struggling.
We gotta be a little bit careful on data privacy.
I, I get that, but that's what sparked my interest, and I'm just, I'm hearing things I don't like to hear, and I'm just like, how bad of a problem is it? And we say that the parents aren't coming to the administrators, which I don't disagree, they're probably not, but in this case, she told me that the administrator told her that her hands, that his hands were tied. And I thought, if that's really true, I'm not saying, there's two sides to every story, but if that's true, that's a pretty poor excuse as a school district to bring to a parent.
Yeah, and, and I guess my, my curiosity is, is, is it something that we can address, or is it something that we're catching the aftermath of the situation that we can't control? As John said, if something happens on social media, then they take it, then they, instead of doing it out in the street, five blocks away, they're doing it in the hallways. Well, you know, and the administrator says, well, fix the problem, and the administrator might be saying, I don't, I can't fix that problem, I can fix the fight, I can take consequences there, but he can't fix the social media part of it, and, and that's what I'm saying. He, I don't know what the answer is or what's going on here, but I'm just saying, I'm all for, for, for being more stringent upon consequences for people fighting, for, for any activity that we know about, doing more with it to get the message out to you that we're not putting up with it, but we're only restricted, we're gonna be restricted to what happens in our school, and we're not gonna have a lot that we can do, or we're very limited what we can do outside of our, our school district, and outside what kids are doing on their own time. We can't shut them down, we can't tell them, they can't, all we can do is deal with the consequences when it comes within our, within our realm. So, I, I agree with you, I'm, I'm all for taking a look and saying, hey, are we, are we being, uh, fair, and are we being strict enough with our discipline to, to address if this, when it happens, uh, but I don't think it's gonna prevent it from happening, it's just gonna be, you know, maybe we get the, maybe, if it gets to trouble out of the schools, that's great, but, but I, I'm all for trying to do more, it's just, I, if people have to realize, you know, we are limited to what we can do, especially if it's happening away from the schools.
And that's where I'm at, that's what I'm kind of asking, is in the future here, can we, I'd like to know, can we do more, can we not do more? Are we doing enough as a board ourselves? I don't like getting a parent to call me and complain, but it's getting to be enough where it's like, okay, we gotta pay attention a little bit, and that's what I'm saying, can we do more, do we need to do more, are we stricken, what, where are we at with this? And yes, you're not gonna stop it.
Erin?
I'm wondering, is there a social media, like, a section in, I'm wondering if the school district's anti-bullying policy includes a section on, um, bullying initiated over social media?
It's in there.
I, I'm new on the board, but would it be possible to circulate the, the anti-bullying policy to the, the school board, just so we're all kind of on the same page?
Yeah, so all our policies are on, we, we'll pull it off, but it's, they're all on the district website.
Okay.
It's not just accessible to, it's accessible to everybody.
It's accessible to everybody, yep. And again, there are speakers you can bring in, there are things that can be the proactive type approach, but those are one-hit-miss typically. They come in, they do a one-time thing, and then they're back out, and if you don't do follow-up with kids, you're never, it's like even with adults, if you don't do, you do a training and then you don't do anything for the next year, or for a year or two, then it, it fades away.
Perhaps we can all take a look at the anti-bullying policy and see whether there's anything that we should do to make it more robust, um, and it's something that can be a, you know, a reference point then for incidents moving forward.
And I think we all wanna do more, it's just, what, what's our limits? How far can we go? That, that's, we can look at it, and I think we can convene about it, maybe you wanna put that a part of your work session, but we all got great ideas, but that don't mean that idea can be implemented either, because it might be too far of a stretch to do, so that's what I'd like to know, I mean, what, what are our capabilities? I mean, how far can we stretch the rules?
Well, and again, um, the, there are limitations as far as what we can and can't do in the school. If it comes in the school building, then we have a right to deal with some of it, or all of it, depending on what it is, but it, it eventually makes it to school at some point in time, either in a smile, a minor or a major issue. If it's a major issue, we deal with it. The minors, and again, you gotta remember, how much time do you have i- in a day to deal with this, the teacher in the classroom, another behavior? That's one piece of the overall job responsibilities that are a part of there.
Well, and part of why I wanna bring it to attention is, is I don't want people to not come to our district because they hear just the bad of Worthington, I want them to at least know we're looking into this.
I, I would argue the point that, yes, it exists, it exists in every school in some form or fashion. At this point, I don't, I don't have enough to say it's really bad or it's really not, compared to any other school district.
Well, we're a big school, I mean, we're, we're easy to pick on, that's what I'm getting at, I mean, we already get enough negativity, we don't need to add to it, and I feel that some of this does. And that's all I've got, I just, I would like to ask the question if we can do more with our rules, I mean, like, a fight that's organized by these kids is three days of school, out-of-school suspension enough, if you can prove it was an organized fight or something, I, I don't feel that it's, that is.
I think it's important to know, like, in my time here, we had a number of families choose Worthington High School because their child was being bullied in some of the smaller schools around here, so I think...
So, I think, like, like, like we all said, I think the bullying and the way people choose to treat each other has gotten to a level that's clearly unacceptable. Can we continue to get better at it? Absolutely. Are there situations where our families are going to feel like this perception of Worthington might be one? I don't know if it's where I want my kid to go, I recognize that. I do think it's important to know that there, we have had a lot of scenarios where we have families from other districts choose to come here, and their child kind of finds their group, finds their social network, finds their club or activity, and then they begin to thrive. So, there's something to be said about that too. It's not that we shouldn't keep looking into it, but I don't think we should continue to think that it's, it's overarching negativity, and there's lots of concerns going on, there are concerns, but we also have a lot of great things where other families, they choose to give us a try, and it's a better place for their child.
Okay, any further discussion on the other business? I think we can truly look into it further and get some answers to what we are doing, what we could maybe do better, so. Any other business? If not, we'll call the meeting adjourned.